Order, it is Tuesday, November 23rd. It's nine o'clock. The invocation will be led by Pastor Gary Taylor with Life Church. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by me. So please all rise if you're able to do so. There we go. I knew you were here. I saw you earlier.
Back row, back.
That. I'm front row Pentecostal, so I gotta pay attention.
All right, well, let's do it. Let's pray. Father God, we come before you boldly but yet humbly, thanking you for your gracious love and mercy. God, we pray for peace and unity throughout this community. God, we pray for our elected officials, the integrity that they use to manage the business of this community, their actions, their decisions, the words that they use. Father, we pray for our law enforcement officers, along with our other community workers, first responders, those who serve. God, we pray for their protection. We pray for their families. God, most of all, we pray that your protection will be upon us in this great town, in this community, in this great nation. God, we thank you and praise you, in Christ's name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know, I couldn't. Thank you, Pastor Gary. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. And gentlemen, the next item of business is our approval of the minutes.
Move approval.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion on the minutes hearing? None, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it. And Mr. Suggs, this is your time to shine.
I won't go that far, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning.
As you know, it's a privilege of mine to stand here today, as we do once every year, this time of year in November, to talk about the outgoing chairman and then to stand here and elect a new chair. So, you know, this year, Chairman Harvey, it's your turn. You were chairman when I was appointed, and it's been an absolute thrill and a great ride for four years. I really do appreciate the relationship that you and I have and you and the staff have and what we've accomplished in the four years. But this is about this year. The things we got to do this year. We went and had the barbecue cook off up in Georgia and had a blast, you know? We got to see you bring in Access 67 as the flash at the Florida Association of Counties. Now, you get to service the chair of rural broadband, you know, for the Association of Counties, and you work tirelessly here, yet you're always doing something, whether you're cooking for a nonprofit or organization, no one works harder than you do. And so it's been a pleasure for us and staff to serve for you and with you for the last year. So, you know, that goes without saying. And so we've really enjoyed ourselves. If you would join me, sir, there's a couple of things that we need to do here this morning to continue the honorary parade. And the first thing is, we want to give you, like we do every year, to our outgoing chairman, a plaque that talks about the appreciation of effective and dedicated leadership as chairman for 2021. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for us, for staff, and for this community.
Thank you.
On behalf of the staff. This year was, as we always do, we take a moment and remember those that served during 9/11, our public safety folks. And we always do a remembrance here at the county administration, and we invite as many people as would like to come and participate. But this year was a little unique. You gave the speech this year on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, and I just want you to know that a lot of folks had commented on that speech and the context of that speech and the way that you deliver it. And what we have here is the original handwritten version that Commissioner, or Chairman Larry Harvey, read that day for 9/11. But what we've done is we've taken it and we've had it memorialized in a plaque for him because we thought that highly of it, and the folks in the audience that day were absolutely touched by the words and the way that you presented yourself that day. So we want to give you that as well, as a token of our appreciation for everything that you've done this year as chairman. So you are so welcome. One last thing. My deputy county administrator and her staff thought it would be also a nice touch to give you something that you could carry with you everywhere you go and had this nice mug made for you, and it's got Board of County Commissioners, Chairman Larry Harvey, 2021 on there. So this is from your staff. This is the ones that work hard every day to do the things that you would like for us to do to make this county better. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You can say anything you want, boss. You're in charge. At least a few more minutes.
Gentlemen and respected leaders in this audience and people that are watching, this year has been a highlight for me. It has been a true privilege to serve you as a chairman. You've made me a better person. We've had struggles that we have walked down this path. We took on a major initiatives to begin with. We landed a lot of planes from the air. This year, we got a lot done, and I couldn't have been successful if it wasn't for you and if it wasn't for our staff. Mr. Suggs, you're a true leader. You have brought wonderful people to this organization. This staff, I would put up against any staff in this state, and I will tell you that. There's never a time that I have to go to staff that the answer is not ready, or the answer will be ready in just a few minutes. We have a tremendous, what we call procurement row over there, that these people, these ladies are willing to do anything they can to be supportive for this county and to move this county forward. And it's about the residents of this county. It's not about our agendas. It's about how can we serve the residents of Putnam County better? And it shows throughout all, constitutionals, every department, I see that the county is trying to make somebody's life out there better than it was before. Again, and we couldn't have done it. I couldn't have done it without you. Mr. Suggs, you don't take enough credit, but it is about you, and it's about the changes you made four years ago. You know, when Governor Scott appointed me seven years ago, he asked me to make change and to swim upstream. And I can honestly say, we have made this place, as a board, better than it's ever been, and I mean that wholeheartedly. And the next chairman will step into shoes and do the job they do. And if you become chairman, let me say this, it's your year. It's not the past year, and it's not the forward year, because every year is different. Commissioner Turner, you went through pretty much craziness with COVID, and you left it better than you found it. And I didn't have to deal with that, but I did have to deal with budgets and things that we had. We wanted projects done, and we got them done. We had more budget meetings than we've ever had, and I loved it, and I appreciated the transparency there. And whoever becomes chairman after me will have their own difficulties to face. But I do want to thank God for one thing. No hurricanes has happened under my chairmanship, and I did not take a vacation, by the way, and I wasn't stuck on a cruise ship. So when does hurricane season end? It's pretty, 31st. So we got a few days, but thank God that nothing's happened yet. So, and I was like, oh, Lord, please, you know? But we have had COVID, and we've had things, we've had challenges, and every year is a new year, every week around here is a new week, every day is a new day. But I can tell you, with the transparency, with the honesty, with the openness that goes on around here, it's a joy to be a Putnam County Commissioner, and it's a joy to serve with you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Well, I certainly concur that we do have the best staff in the state of Florida, so, and they are always willing to do what's necessary and help anybody, so I appreciate that very much, Mr. Harvey. Well, gentlemen, it's now time to do county business. County business is we need to elect a new chair and a vice chair this morning.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to select Commissioner Bill Pickens as the chairman for the upcoming year.
We have a motion. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close. Motion to close nominations?
Move with closed nomination.
Second?
I'll take it.
Okay. All right. Here are no other nominees. I'd like to ask for a vote to go ahead and appoint Mr. Bill Pickens as the new chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Pickens.
You want me to slide over here?
Yeah.
I got a mess. Just take me a second.
All right, as we settle in for our new seats, we'll go ahead now. I'll open up the floor for nominations for a vice chair. Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
I'll make the nomination to nominate Mr. Terry Turner for vice chairman.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Terry Turner. Do we have any other nominations?
I make a motion to nominate Jeff Rawls.
All right, we have a second nomination for Commissioner Jeff Rawls. Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask for a second to go ahead and close nominations.
Close nominations.
All right. And while I ask for a vote, and I'll ask for it in the way that it was presented, so all in favor of Commissioner Terry Turner being vice chair of the Board of County Commissioners, please show by, or show by show of hands, please. Okay? All those in favor of Commissioner Rawls. Let directly reflect, it's a 3-2 vote for Commissioner Terry Turner to serve as vice chair for this year. Congratulations, Commissioner Turner. Mr. Chairman Pickens, that concludes my county business for this morning. The agenda is yours, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Administrator Suggs. And I just want to make a couple of comments. I'll make some more comments at the end. Larry Harvey, I've been here, I'm starting my sixth year today, and I've been under his chairmanship two different times, and he leads by example, the work that he does for Putnam County. But Larry also serves on a number of boards on the state level. So Larry is all over the state, a lot in Tallahassee, and he's just a true workhorse, a true public servant for Putnam County, Larry, and I truly thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, since I am the chairman, they say I can pretty much do what I want to. So we're going to change the agenda around just a little bit. Commissioner Turner is not feeling well this morning, so it's okay with the board. I'm going to move the consent agenda up, and then we'll move presentations back after the consent agenda, if that's okay. All right, so first we'll have public comment on agenda items. This is where you can come and speak on an agenda item. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to attention of the board, but it's not reasonable to expect the board to engage in debate or discussion on these items. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, Mr. Woodward, Michael Woodward, you come forward.
Yep.
I'm gonna say, Mr. Woodward, this is on the agenda at 5:05. But please come forward if you'd like to speak.
Okay.
Excuse me, 9:05. You're correct.
Chairman Pickens, I'd be happy to come back when that, at 9:05, when the 9:05 item is officially open for hearing, if you prefer.
No, sir, that's fine.
It's, Michael Woodward, 517 South Francis Street, Interlochen. Yes, I had expected that the item would have been presented by staff already, so I'm going to be talking about something that you haven't had presented to you yet, and that is the property rights amendment. I'm sure you've read it in your agenda packet. I'm speaking in favor of it. I'm in agreement with every word of the property rights element to the comprehensive plan that's being proposed, but I am proposing that you expand on it just a bit. You see, over the last few months, some of our neighbors from South Putnam have done a good job of reminding us that sometimes when someone wants to change the use of his property, the property rights of neighboring property owners can be affected. For example, if I use my property for something that creates a foul odor or a loud noise, the odor or noise may not stay on my property. When that odor or noise intrudes onto my neighbor's property, my neighbor's property rights are being infringed. Property rights don't belong only to property owners who want to change the use of their properties. The owners of nearby properties have property rights too. In recognition of that fact, I ask that you consider adding the following language to the property rights element. Policy J 115. The right of a property owner to use and enjoy his or her property without intrusion from the negative impacts of incompatible land uses. The applicable Florida statute says that you can write your own property rights element as long as it does not conflict with a statement of rights presented in the statute. The additional language that I have proposed does not conflict with the other four property rights in the statement of rights, so it is allowable under the statute. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Can you restate that again?
Yes, sir. Policy J 115. The right of a property owner to use and enjoy his or her property without intrusion from the negative impacts of incompatible land uses.
Any other questions for Mr. Woodward?
I do. So every now and then I hear a helicopter and I look up, I hear a jet and I look up. It's unusual for me to hear that in Putnam County. Is that an intrusion?
That is not from an incompatible land use, sir. An incompatible land use is one that by its nature is going to generate, in the nature of that land use, it's going to generate something that is going to be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties.
So...
So I'm not talking about some occasional noise or odor that happens in the course of some use that is not generating those things every day. But what I'm talking about is the sort of use that produces those things as a necessary part of the activity that that use is about.
I live on three acres of land. My son rides a dirt bike. If the neighbor complained that his dirt bike is loud, would that rise to the intrusive nature of what you're describing? And would, if somebody complained and said, I can't enjoy my property because I have to hear this thing going round and around?
No, sir. What the language I'm proposing addresses is a change in a land use of one property that's going to result in a different use for that property that will, by its nature, have a detrimental effect on the properties around it.
But so would the language not have to say a proposed change would not cause any intrusion of negative value or a negative impact?
It certainly could be worded that way.
I think the way you propose it, and that's why I asked you to repeat it, is it's just, it almost, I could, I have a thousand scenarios running through my mind right now where we would have neighbors against neighbors. I think that the way you presented it, I would not be in favor of putting it in that way because I think we would be just opening Pandora's box.
Well, then I would ask that you would consider something to the same effect but worded more satisfactorily. Again, what I'm proposing is language that's not talking about an incompatible activity or something that somebody happens to be doing on a neighboring property. I'm talking about a change to a land use that by its nature is going to be generating those types of odors or noises or other activities that are incompatible with the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties.
Again, I think that the problem that it creates is the definitions are so vague that if somebody bought five acres of agricultural property next to somebody else's five acres, and they decided they wanted to raise hogs, and the person next door complained, it's not a transient odor, it's an odor that's there to stay as long as they have hogs. I think that you could take this to a thousand different directions, and I just think that it would be a little bit too restrictive. I think as citizens, we owe it to our neighbors to be good neighbors, but I think under property rights, you're taking away somebody's rights at that point. It's almost counterintuitive by putting that language in there, is my point, because it's just too vague.
I will accept that a change in the language to address the concern that you've raised would be appropriate. What I'm looking for is to show that there is, within the comprehensive plan, a need for balancing the rights of a property owner who is seeking a land use change, a zoning change, a special use permit, something like that, with the property rights of an adjacent property owner who may be affected by the use that it is being changed to. So what you proposed at the beginning of our dialogue sounded to me like putting in language to the effect of intrusion from the negative impacts of a change to an incompatible land use. So that would eliminate the problem that you have raised, that my language might have created, for someone who already is using his or her land within its existing land use and just happens to be doing some activity that bothers someone.
So if somebody has a piece of ag land that has a future land use of, say, urban reserve, and I believe under UR you can have multifamily, and somebody rezones to multifamily and puts a multifamily development next door to a single-family multi-acre property, how would your proposed language affect that?
I think if we, I think if we...
I just, the more you talk, the more scenarios keep going through my mind, and the more you're telling me that unless, you know, I would be willing to boat to table this to have a further discussion about it, but I would have to see specific language. I think it's just what you're offering is so vague, and you're an attorney, and you know how attorneys work, and...
We're gonna see this, we're gonna see this in this agenda item, correct? So we'll discuss that. So I know everybody else wants to talk on it. Is it okay if we just hold on until we get to the 7:00? Okay, I probably should have asked you to do the 7:00 because we can finish the consent agenda and we move on to this in regular order. Is that okay? Or you want to...
Fine with me.
Park this now and then, come bring it back up. We're gonna have a public hearing in a few minutes.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Okay, we'll move down to the consent agenda. I'll start to my far right. Any items you want to pull?
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
I have none either, sir.
Okay. All right. I would like to ask Larry Harvey if he would make the motion to accept all items on the consent agenda, since she's had not been able to make a motion in a year.
(laughing) And I'm just dying to. You're correct. So, Mr. Chairman, I propose that we adopt the consent agenda items A through I.
A second? We got a second. We got a proper motion to accept the consent agenda and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and okay, we say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign.
Good deal.
Okay, we'll move back up to presentations, and Julianne, countywide projects update.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a reminder, today's list is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every county project or initiative underway. It's a list of those that are of most importance to administration, commissioners, or citizens. With that, administration has a contract management database project underway. Administration and IT have developed a contract management database, and final program testing and contract document uploads are in progress. The animal control facility, core borings were obtained. Commissioner Rawls is working on a final set of plans needed prior to soliciting for construction services. The Department of Health has continued to provide PRC testing on Hussin Avenue, Tuesday to Saturday, from 9:00 to 5:00 by appointment. Residents may also call the support line to schedule an appointment. They are also offering PCR testing at the Health Department for school-aged children who are symptomatic by appointment only. They continue to provide COVID vaccine at the Health Department. They had Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson in stock, and they are available Monday to Friday from 9:00 to 3:00 with no appointment necessary. They are still providing the third dose to those who are immunocompromised with Pfizer and Moderna vaccine. The Melrose Library expansion is still underway. Field orders 1 and 2 were submitted to Putnam County Building Department on 10-8 and were approved. The contractor is now able to get the final installation finished, inspection by the county, and move forward with drywall. Windows are still on track for the December 22nd delivery. Unfortunately, the wood door is still on backorder, and the contractor doesn't have a solid delivery date at this time, but we are working with the vendor to get that resolved. Georgetown Park with Parks and Recreation, staff met with a consultant from UF for an update on the progress and opportunity to provide feedback on desired key features and elements. A preliminary conceptual design is being drafted to incorporate the key elements, and additional work on the remaining management plan objectives is in progress. The Flora Home Park historic building upgrade, to date, they have spent nearly $90,000 in renovations. They have completed the installation and painting of the side entry door. They are nearly finished with exterior painting. They removed all the old paint from the beautiful front entry door, and that is all that remains to be painted. Last weekend, they had a workday to process the 96-year-old heart pine flooring that was donated. Seven of them cut and then stacked all the usable flooring for insulation at a later date. Our building permit is finally approved in its entirety, so we plan to call for rough plumbing and electrical inspection soon. They are actively making plans for the construction of the exterior structures and are still waiting for the well insulation and then allow them to have the final inspection of the septic tank. The comprehensive plan consultants, staff has finalized work addressing the comments sent to the county by the Department of Economic Opportunity and has made changes as requested by the B OCC at the workshop held on November 8th. The comp plan... The Comp Plan Adoption Hearing is scheduled to take place this afternoon at 5:05. The Citizen Serve Online Permitting Project, the software is still undergoing data transfer and migration. Staff training began November 22nd. Fort Gates Ferry Landing, construction has commenced, the old pilings have been removed and all new pilings have been installed. Barden Bridge, construction is underway, all pilings have been installed, and the deck is scheduled to be poured in December. Lake Susan Road, Phase Two, the project is in the closeout phase. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing, Palm Avenue to the CSX Crossing at the Placa Fire Department, requests for qualifications to perform construction engineering and inspection services were obtained and ranked. Concurrents from FDOT is being obtained to begin negotiations with a top-ranked firm. A request for action from the B OCC to approve the ranked CEI firms is anticipated December 14th pending the FDOT concurrence. County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation, request for qualifications to perform contract construction engineering and inspection services has been advertised and were due December 16th. Final permitting activities are underway. Septic to Sewer Conversion, Phase Two, the contractor has installed 20 of the 89 grinder pump systems. Completion of the project is anticipated to be April of 2022. Septic to Sewer Conversion, Phase Three, Public Works is currently compiling the bid documents for the project and collecting the required utility easements and utility agreements needed to begin the project. Soliger Salem and Bull Green Drainage Project, the executed contract has been obtained, and the preconstruction meeting is anticipated to be complete by mid-December. Dirt to pave 2020, Silver Beach Boulevard, Magnolia, North Beach Street, Siphish Point Circle, Lakeview Trail, Twin Lakes Boulevard, Cinnamon Drive, Hunter Road, and College are all complete. Bay Bridge has been paved and the punch list items are being addressed. The contractor is planning to begin paving operations in Kingfish, Drood, Volsom, Blanchett, Marlowe, Indiana, and Higgins Street in mid-December, anticipated to be completed by the first quarter of 2022. Dirt to pave 2021, bids were received September 23rd, '21, a notice of intended action to reject all bids was posted on November 9th. Public Works is revising the bid documents to re-advertise for construction. Dirt to pave 2022, survey work is underway by county staff. East Putnam Drainage and Flood Mitigation, Phase One and Two, Phase One punch list items are being addressed. Phase Two construction activities are complete. Phase Three bid documents have been advertised and bids are due in December. Phase Four Agreement with FDEP for additional funding and a time extension is being presented at this morning's consent agenda. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement, State Road 19 to County Road 309C. Engineering Design Services and Advertisement for Construction Activities are scheduled to be completed by January 2022. An amendment to the agreement with DEO is underway to allocate additional funds and time to the project to extend the limits of the project further east along St. John's Avenue. St. John's Avenue Multi-Use Trail, a change order has been obtained from the contractor and reviewed by FDOT. Public Works will present this item for discussion during the December 14th B OCC workshop. Countywide Drainage Improvements, the executed contract has been obtained, and the preconstruction meeting is anticipated to be completed by mid-December. South Palm Sidewalk, Drood Street to Silver Lake Drive, the signed funding agreement has been sent to FDOT for execution. Final checklist items are being coordinated with FDOT prior to the completely executed agreement being obtained. Saratoga Harbor Drainage Project, construction bid documents have been advertised and the bids are due December 17th. James A. Long Elementary and Jenkins Middle School Safe Routes to School, 100% design plans are under review by FDOT. Fiscal Year 21 Road Resurfacing Project, the project is in the closeout phase. County Road 315 Resurfacing Project, RFQ Submittals for Design Services Required were obtained and ranked. Concurrents from FDOT is being obtained to begin negotiations with a top-ranked firm. A request for action from the B OCC to approve the ranked design firms is anticipated on December 14th, 2021. Port Buena Vista Water, Waste Water Treatment Plant Conversions and Sewer Main Extension, completely executed agreements have been obtained by FDEM. Public Works is currently awaiting a proposal from EOR Matthews Design Group for post-design services required to complete the project prior to advertising for construction. Paradise Point Sewer System Handling and Generator Installation, we've answered all the questions and additional information requests from FDEM, currently waiting on a construction agreement from FDEM. Countywide Guardrail Installation, Repairs and Replacements, a notice of intended action to withdraw the bid was advertised on November 4th. Public Works is revising the bid documents and plans to re-advertise the project in early December. Painting of the B OCC and the Public Works Building, painting is underway at the B OCC building, work has not yet begun at the Public Works Building. Sanitation has the Cell 4A Construction Project, Cell 4A Liner is complete, the final leachate collection system is set to go in this week. Protective Sand Layers will go in next, the completion should be done in the middle of December. That concludes my project update.
Okay, thank you, Julianne. As you can see, there's a lot of things going on in Putnam County, and that's not all of them, but thank you so much. It's been requested that we take a five-minute recess, so I'll recess the meeting for five minutes.
We convene the meeting and we'll continue with our presentations. And I'll ask Mr. Don Savoy with Meridian Behavioral Healthcare to come forward. Welcome this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hi, my name's Don Savoy. I am the President and CEO of Meridian Behavioral Healthcare. Just for reference, Meridian is the publicly funded Baker Act receiving facility for Putnam County. And recently, we purchased some property here in Palaca. And we're expanding into medication assisted treatment outpatient and psychiatry here in the county. Had a conversation about two months ago with Mr. Suggs and Ms. Young. And I thought it was important to come before the commission and really just talk to you about the services that we offer, what we're trying to provide in additional services and really give you a feel for who we are and have a conversation if that's okay about the needs and how we can support the folks of Putnam County. So a little bit of background, I took over as a CEO about two years ago, literally just before COVID. And one of the things I like to do is look at where the needs are. And one thing you'll find with Meridian is we're about going where we can help, where we're asked to help and where we're asked to provide care. So if you go to page two, you should have a handout. You'll see really the map of our service reach. We are the safety net provider for 11 counties. We cover about 8,000 square miles. We were established in 1971. We just went through another accreditation this June. And got the best possible outcome, which is a three-year accreditation. We provide mental health, substance use services, adults, children, really a full continuum of care. And also, we have four separate sub corporations which provide housing. So one of the things you find with folks with mental illness and substance use disorder, it's hard to get that under control if they don't have a place to live. It's hard to worry about your medications if you don't have a home. So we set up four corporations several years ago. We run 66 housing units through HUD specifically around needs for folks with mental illness. Those all exist in the Gainesville, Alachua County region right now. Our mission is really all about promote health, recovery, well-being. We're seeing a lot of changes in behavioral health. There's a lot more of a discussion than there has been in the past. But I think it's really, really important. Stigma is changing and it's coming down. But I don't think we're anywhere near where we need to be yet. But the ability to have the discussion means that we can work to help folks, help the citizens that we serve. On this page right here with this oval, it's probably the most important page on here. It really lays out the services that Meridian provides. We provide everything from acute care crisis stabilization, addictions receiving for Marchman Acts, adults, children, we have a large psychiatric component, 66-bed residential unit for adults, 18, 19-bed residential unit for children for both mental health and substance abuse. We also provide respite services for those kids. I mentioned housing, but we have some other housing as well for its short term. So when someone comes into our acute care, so as the public receiving facility, if someone comes into our addictions receiving or our mental health inpatient component, last thing you want to do when we stabilize and discharge is put them back into the same setting that was causing some of their problems in the first place. So we basically bought a motel and we put people in short-term housing while we worked to get them a job, while we work on better housing and all the coordinated services. So we also do a lot with prevention. In 11 counties, we're in the school departments. So we work with folks, families and others. And really the full continuum. When you think about community mental health, we are one of the organizations that provides that full continuum of care. We don't, just to give you a little bit of clarity, we don't do that in Putnam County to this point. But we're seeing an uptick in the number of folks that we're serving from Putnam County. And that, if you look at that over time, it's continued to go up and up and up. So that's part of the reason why last year we started looking at property here in town and started, we've now purchased and we're going to provide some of those services in town. Because we can see someone in our acute care, but if we can't get them into long-term stable services and don't have a discharge plan to support them, they're going to recidivate back through those services. And we're really not going to help them. If anything, their quality of life is going to go down and so is their families for those affected. On the telehealth page, just to give you an idea, last fiscal year, and our fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, so this would have ended this past June 30th. We served 227 Putnam County residents with nearly 1,000 telehealth services. That's a lot. That's an important number because again, we don't have, we didn't have a presence in the county.
You said 2,000?
Sorry, 227 residents with nearly 1,000 services. It allows for faster access and treatment. When I get into the next slides, one of the things you'll notice is the only folks that get to Meridian at this point are folks with means. They have to have transportation. They have to have access. Not everybody has transportation and access. Largely, the most needy don't have access and transportation. So being able to provide telehealth really makes a difference and we are going to expand on that. Meridian's been providing telehealth services now for the last eight years. So when COVID hit, we went from, we were the second largest telehealth provider in the state for behavioral health services. We went from providing 40 a week to 8,000 a month in a matter of two weeks, a year ago, March. And that allowed us to keep continuity of care and really manage the folks that we served. If I'm giving you too much, tell me, sometimes I can get in the weeds. And if you have any questions, please stop me. The next page talks about who we served last year in Putnam County. 21% were children, a good number. It's on par with a lot of folks we see from different counties. Really, the breakout here is pretty standard for what we see. Female, 217 adults, 51 kids. Male, 191 adults and 53 kids. On the next page though, I want to talk a little bit about.
Can you, can you back up a second?
Sure.
You said female 200 what?
217 adult females and 51 female children, juveniles.
But you're, I'm still on the telehealth page. You had said there was 227. Is that only for telehealth or is that, okay.
Yes, just for telehealth.
Okay.
On this next page where you'll see some blocks for adults and kids, just kind of give you an idea, acute care for which we're funded partially by the county as the public receiving, we saw 132 individuals last year. Some of the, and that's okay, that's actually a good number. But we served a total of 512 folks. If you look over across the top, 119 adults in psychiatry. Psychiatry is a much in-demand service and we don't, Meridian doesn't have a waitlist for those services. So when you can't get services somewhere else, you reach out. And that's why we're seeing a lot, and an increasing number of Putnam County residents, in my opinion, coming to Meridian, likely in Gainesville or some of our other clinics. Same thing with medication assisted treatment. So the facility that we're opening here in Palaca is a medication assisted treatment clinic first, but it'll also do outpatient psychiatry and we'll have telehealth from there. So if you don't have telehealth in your home, but you can get to Palaca far easier than you can get to Gainesville, we'll connect you with your therapist from our office if we don't have them in Palaca. But medication assisted treatment, there hasn't been an expansion of methadone services in probably about 10 years. It has to be state procured. When it came out in 2000, we jumped on it mainly because we knew that we were seeing more and more folks in methadone treatment and buprenorphine and vebetrol. These are medication, medication assisted treatments coming from Palaca. And well, really all of Putnam County to Meridian. The numbers continue to escalate. And just to give you an idea, since COVID, we've seen a 29% increase in the need for substance abuse services across the board, likely due to everything that's going on with COVID. If we don't tamp that down now and provide services, we're going to have another problem on our hands. Really, it's already starting, but will likely be for the next year or two. So again, we started this process of standing up a clinic here. When I took over in early February of 2000, we had to bid for it and we won the bid against the for-profits. So we're, if you can't tell, we're excited to get into town and provide some additional services. The other thing I mentioned is children psychiatry. This number really stood out to me. Forty-four children are in our care for children psychiatry. That in behavioral health terms is the most difficult service to procure. There's only about 8,800 child psychiatrists in the country. But we have three going on four right now. So we are seeing a lot of folks make the trek or use telehealth to get those services out of Gainesville through our providers. And then also counseling numbers, 118 and 66. Largely, I'd have to say a lot of that's probably follow-up from acute care services after post-discharge. Again, if they have the means to follow through with care at Meridian. On the next page, I'll just touch on this very briefly. Meridian always makes the community the payer of last resort and public funds the payer of last resort. The majority of those we saw, 88% last year in Putnam County were at or below the federal poverty guidelines. No one was seen that was ineligible for some type of subsidy by Meridian. Indigent care, 33% of the services that we provided have been paid for with indigent care state dollars. That's through DCF and LSF, which is the managing entity. And 61% had some form of Medicaid. Interesting and just a note, 14, almost 15% have some type of insurance. But in behavioral health, a lot of the services aren't covered by insurance plans. So for, only 4% of the services for those individuals actually had any coverage at all. So there's a big disparity between, between services and delivery. So why Meridian here and now? I kind of got into that a little bit already. There's a need. There's a ever-increasing need for folks from Putnam County to receive services and we see a gap. We are friends with SMA, which is one of the outpatient providers here. Their CEO Ivan Cosimi is a good friend. We have conversations about how to provide additional care in Putnam County. We coordinate our efforts and I think that's really, really important. You know, again, need gap growing. Comparison to some other counties, y'all are about the same size as Columbia. That's the second largest county we serve. And I kind of look at that, their numbers and say, okay, are we doing a good job? And you got to kind of compare to know whether you're on par. Good number is about between 8 and 10% of the folks, folks that need, 8 to 10% of the population will need some form of behavioral health services now or in the future. So we use that 8% as sort of a mark. We're quite a bit below that right now, even if you look at all the services that are being provided. And you know, we have seen, you know, you guys are close to a lot of counties. So we've seen some folks migrate to Ocala and Marion County. But there's also some challenges there. So we've been trying to work through some of that. To give you an idea what we're up to, first of the year, we'll be opening up on January 3rd. If everything goes well, we got construction done, we'll be opening up right up here on Krill Ave, an outpatient facility. That'll be for post-discharge follow-up. For all the folks we're currently serving, we're going to give them the option not to drive to Gainesville, not to have to come in. So if we can get them into that office, we can do vitals, we can do everything we need. Even if it's telehealth, we can manage through telehealth, start to get that rolling. We've already applied for the medication assisted treatment license, but that's a good six-month process. It's got to go through DEA, it's got to go through SAMSA, then it's going to come back to local, to DCF and go through all that process. We're in good shape on that. This is not our first rodeo, so to speak. We have a large medication assisted treatment clinic in Gainesville. We have another one in Lake City. We're opening one in Swanee and we have one in Chiefland that's been in operation for a long time. You know, healthcare is local and it has to be local to be successful, in my opinion. And that's really part of the, that's the main reason why we're kind of moving into provide services directly here in the county. One thing I'll tell you, you hear a lot about medication assisted treatment. I've been in this business a lot of years. It requires a fidelity of process. And that means it can't be just medication. There has to be counseling. There has to be a psychiatric component and a medical component. We have to get folks, and everybody's different, but we have to get them from a more intensive model back to their normal life state. So get them through to other resources like AA, NA, brief counseling, the things that matter for two reasons. It's the most important thing for the individual. But also, if we were to serve people sort of indefinitely through medication, we run out of capacity. We don't have the ability to serve the next folks that come through. And then you get into waitlists and other things. So we focus on fidelity of model, but also on getting folks back to their, to their life state where they're needed. And really, you know, I love to answer any questions you all have. From the conversations I had with law enforcement, with EMS, with Mr. Suggs and Ms. Young, there seems to be a big discussion around behavioral health. And while it can be frustrating, I think it's important. It's a good thing to have that discussion. Because you know, while it may be hard to figure out, if you're not having the conversation, you're not solving the problem. And I'm just here to be, help with the community, be part of it and support in any way I can. So I gladly answer any questions you all have. And downstream, if you ever need me, if there's anything that comes up, you have my number. I left it on the sheet. Please call and I'll bring out some experts. We'll have a conversation, we'll move the needle together.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Harvey has some questions and also Commissioner Rawls.
Thank you.
Mr. Savoy, thank you for your presentation today. Where is your facility going to be at on Krill Avenue?
It's just northeast of here. I don't know the address.
Dr. Finley's old office, next to Bates Houghton Ford.
Okay, 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 good. And I do appreciate you coming. I think you're late to the game. I hate to say that, but I'm glad you're here. I know that we've heard a lot from SMA lately. And they've really stepped up for us and I'm glad you're coming. I really am. I think that there's a big need. Commissioner Rawls has been hosting some workshops on mental health and all the different components thereof. And it's, it's grown a lot of different tentacles. And I'm sure that it started out to be something small and it's gotten to be very large. But there is a need and you see that need. And we appreciate you coming to work with our partners here and be a part of that solution. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
Y'all do participate in the, in the meetings that we have. We're on the second Thursday of each month at 9:00 AM. But the participation level from Meridian is very small. And you know, you mentioned SMA. When you first started, when you first started talking, you said, we provide your, we're your Baker Act receiving facility for Putnam County. And I wrote that down. And my next question would be where? But you answered it later and said, we don't, we don't do anything in Putnam County. So the gentleman that came from continuum of care stood up and said, we don't do well by Putnam County, but we're going to work on that. So I know that Putnam, you got the MAP program here by virtue of getting in other counties. This is one of those things where, you know, we had to be taken on in order for you to get the money for other counties. I'll take it any way I can get it, to be honest with you. But what we really need is a centralized clearinghouse. Right now, I've, I'm listening to Meridian. We've got SMA. We've got Department of Children Family Services. We've got Guiding Light or the Nehemiah Project and Life Church with Recovery Point, all these different agencies. And it, I think this whole conversation was summed up by Judge Ninesk when he stood up. After four hours of listening to us talk, and he said, I'm frustrated because after 10 years as a prosecutor, I'm just now hearing that these services are available. And there was about 30 organizations in the room. So that defines the problem. The problem is that we're not holding hands. You're working your direction, SMA's working their direction. So one of the things that we're trying to do, and we're starting to take the tentacles off the octopus a little bit and get it more centralized. And we're trying to get to a point where we can come in and address the commission. It's our responsible as commissioner, responsibility as commissioners to provide these services. It's not your responsibility. You're in business, you're in business not because you're a nice guy. You didn't drive here on a car that you paid for. You know, this is all provided by the income that you get from your business. So nonprofit or for-profit, it's all about making money. I agree. The problem is, it seems to me like there's all these organizations getting money and everybody's doing their little thing, but nothing really translates to the, to the actual community. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are opening up the MAP clinic here. I hope that it goes much farther than that. I hope that we one day have a Baker Act receiving facility here because that's problematic in itself. Last night SMA reported we had 245 year-to-date transported or Baker Acts. I know that they weren't received here in Putnam County because we don't have a receiving facility.
Right.
But we have one in Gainesville. And my question is, why not open one up here? You know, so good, that's a question to you.
Sure, if I may respond. So there's a lot to unpack there. Let me first say, you're not wrong. You're absolutely not wrong. In the communities we operate, we operate with, as the, as the expert, as the leader. But we also have UF Shands, we have a lot of different providers. But someone has to coordinate that care. And I can tell you, in the counties that we lead, Meridian is the expert to coordinate the care. As the, as the safety net provider, we work to coordinate all those folks. And that's part of our mission in the counties that we serve. So there needs to be an organization that I would call the lead agency. And that can be SMA, I'm good with that. But someone needs to coordinate care because the information's not out there. People don't know where to turn for coordinated treatment for behavioral health and substance abuse services. And that's, that's the reality of the silo effect that you see with different organizations. And that's the frustration and I understand that.
Yeah.
To give you an idea from Meridian, yeah, we're a business. But on our best years prior to COVID, we had a 3% margin. Typically, it was around 2%.
You're a nonprofit, that's what you're supposed to do.
That's right. All our, all our dollars go back into services.
My construction company, I'm for-profit and then it looks even worse. So I understand what you're saying.
Commissioner Rawls, you're right. But I can also tell you that in the last three years, Meridian's grown from 42 million to 54 million. And all that money goes back into the county and the folks.
And here we are waiting.
I can't say what happened before me, but I saw a need when I took over. And we've been looking for property since January of 2020.
Right, I'm very familiar.
Hit us a little bit. But I'm also waited to come here until we closed on the property. Because I don't like to come in and make a lot of promises I can't keep. So I waited till we closed on the property. I waited till we now are getting the license. And we're going to start to provide services. And we hope we overwhelm you with the services we provide, but yet to be seen.
You mentioned North Florida, or you mentioned Shands, so we have North Florida Regional. Part of our responsibilities as commissioners is provide hospitalization. What's not provided here is mental health at the hospital. That was taken away for some reason.
Yeah.
What could you see Meridian doing to help bring that to the table? And because I personally think that it's our responsibility as commissioners to bring North Florida in here and ask them to explain to us why they're not providing these services. Because we need to get someone to provide the services. And you're saying that you have assistance from Shands. Is that financial assistance or the fact that they have psychiatrists or what's the advantage?
We also have North Florida in Gainesville. And then we have, there are no psychiatric hospitals.
For mental health, you have North Florida?
Uh huh. They have a large psychiatric, they're building another one out on Archer Road right now in Gainesville. So they're expanding their footprint for psychiatric quite a bit. What we do is we work to coordinate care. So to give you an idea, and this is a really good, important point. So when someone needs to be Baker acted or Marchman acted, mental health substitutes for their own safety or someone else's safety, the first thing that has to happen is a screening and evaluation. In smaller counties, typically, that, in really small counties, law enforcement drives out of the county, like you've seen, to Gainesville or to Daytona or to Jackson, somewhere to bring those folks. The statute largely states nearest receiving facility, although you can designate as a commission, you can designate the receiving facility. That person's brought in for evaluation. If they don't meet criteria, they're going to be released.
Can you expand upon that? You said we could designate the receiving facility.
So the, each county is required to have a transportation plan, it's called.
Right.
And the commission, along with stakeholders, share in that, that plan for that process. And that, I believe, is signed off every year. But when someone's brought in, they're brought in for screening and evaluation. They could be brought to Meridian. They may, if they don't meet criteria, then they're going to be offered services that are what I would call least restrictive, most effective for that person as an individual. Could be medication assisted treatment, intensive outpatient, outpatient residential, all the components. If they meet the criteria for evaluation, then they'd be held for up to 72 hours on a Baker Act for evaluation and treatment and stabilization. Could be held much longer, could go on to state hospital. There's a lot of permutations to that. But the first thing is evaluation. And what I've seen, this is just some information, what I've seen in counties that, they talk, talk a lot about, well, we need a Baker Act facility here, a psychiatric hospital here. That's a pretty expensive lift. But if you start with screening and evaluation locally and then management, some folks will go right back to home. Some folks will get sent to inpatient psychiatric or inpatient addictions. That can be in Gainesville, that can be in Daytona, that can be in Ocala, wherever there's a bed. But that's a downstream service that typically doesn't last a long time. And wouldn't be my first priority if I were y'all. I'd look to put that screening and evaluation in the county. Because trying to get the hospital or to stand up and build a compliant psychiatric facility for the inpatient component is real expensive. And also, it's a far fewer number of folks than actually get screened and evaluated. Having that 24/7, 365 screening capability starts the ball, starts you down that road. And that's real, for where I would start.
What would that cost?
Right now, we're looking at a central receiving system in Alachua County where everyone would come to Meridian. It's right around $2 million a year is the operating, 2.1 million is the operating budget.
How's that funded?
Well, there are, hard answer. Nine in the state, nine central receiving systems have been stood up back in 2016. State legislature appropriated 2.5 million for these nine organizations, nine receiving facilities that manage 26 counties. So.
2.5 million per or total?
Yes. So they manage, there are nine and they manage 26 counties. So if you think about it, the outlying counties are brought in and supported by those central receiving models. That money got funded in 2018. It almost got pulled out this past year. But it's been said by the legislature that they don't anticipate putting any more central receiving dollars into the system. So here in Alachua, we haven't figured out how we're going to pay for that yet. It's a need and a demand of the county commission. Because we have four, we used to have five, we have four receiving facilities. There's no coordination and treatment. They could be brought to North Florida, they could be brought to Shands, they could be brought to the VA, they could be brought to Meridian. But Meridian can't reach out to the other three and say, who's been treating this individual and what's been effective and what hasn't worked. So a central receiving gives us that coordinated approach. And I think that's somewhat where you're going with that.
Right.
But once you have a receiving facility in town, then it really becomes a lot of expensive transport for the folks that are going to be served until you stand up a psychiatric hospital. I don't know if that helps. And just so you know, I drove here in my own truck.
You what?
I don't have a company vehicle. I drove here in my own truck.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you get a, you get a paycheck that's paid for that.
Yeah.
I, when I first went into business, I was told by my partner, if you want to make money, start a nonprofit. If you want to lose money, start a for-profit. It's counterintuitive, but that's just the way it works. But the, Putnam County's needs are probably no different than anybody else's, but ours are more glaringly obvious. And when you look at the OD maps, you can actually see the concentration of where our issues are and what our issues are. We have a lot of substance abuse issues that need to be dealt with. Obviously, with the MAT treatment, I think that's, that's a really good step in the right direction. But you know, the, I really would encourage you to come to one or more of the meetings and participate because what we're trying to do is figure out how we get down to, let's pick three items that we can put into play right now that'll take a step in the right direction. When you look at Feed the Need, Better Life, Christian Service and all these other groups that are out there as well, they're willing to do their part. But there was no one communicating with each other. Just like you said, person can go to one June facility, get prescribed, get taken care of, then go to another one. And if y'all aren't talking to each other, you don't know what they did, what worked, what didn't work. So I applaud your efforts. You know, I'm frustrated with the, with the path that we're going on right now. I want to see us, as much money is spent, when you go back to that meeting in July and you look at how much money is being spent in the county already. And then you look at how little is actually being done. What I told them is like a bunch of arrows firing off in all different directions. We need to get them all heading relatively in the same direction and not duplicate and duplicate and duplicate. And that, that seems to be the biggest problem. When I first heard of you guys and I listened to SMA, I'm like, well, it almost sounds like you're on the same path, doing the same thing. And then you've got the jail, they're starting the recovery pod.
Right.
So we need as much concerted work effort, but as much cooperation and, you know, to get that path, whether you guys are the lead agency or SMA is, I personally don't have a dog in the fight one way or another, but.
Me either.
So, nobody wants Putnam County?
No, no, I mean, we're here to help, but, you know, we'll know when we're seeing the citizens served. You know, we stepped in because there was a gap and a need. My, some of my, one of my senior staff, Alan Pollan, has been coming to those meetings. And I'll be honest with you, I've asked him to tread lightly. Because, you know, you don't want to come in and be a bull in a china closet.
Tell him to be the bull.
But, you know, if I'm hearing the direction is come in and offer suggestions, then we'll step up and we'll do that. But to this point, we've been kind of quiet.
Nancy was nice enough to put together a list of services, you know, just a wish list. And then she started filling in who's providing, and you see this huge gap. And that's what we're trying to figure out, is taking the needs and then writing in the agencies. Because the agencies, or in some cases in Putnam County, they're just not providing. So, that's, I think, step number one that we're working on. And I think at our next meeting, we'll have that gap analysis part of it will be fulfilled, and we'd love to have you guys obviously doing your part.
Yeah. What I would say about the analysis and all those pieces, and I think this is this super important point, it's where the rubber meets the road. Is there a warm handoff between those organizations? Are people held accountable within all of our organizations to make sure that we're doing what we need to do?
To me, it felt like there was a disconnect, that nobody talked to each other, and there was no handoff. It was, you know, SMA transport them, that's what their grant is for, they take them out of county. And then, you know, what happens, they come back into county, do we have MATT treatment? Oh yeah, we can take care of 20 people. How many will you be able to do over here?
Well, it's limited by staffing, not by dollars. I can tell you that we have a model that typically works. That is Medicaid, insurance, and indigenous care funds. So with Medicaid, we can take any number of folks, but we have to keep staffing up to it. To give you an idea, we opened up Chiefland Clinic, we're serving over 100 folks there.
Okay.
We moved folks out of Gainesville when we opened Chiefland.
Sure.
And we're back to serving 350, 400 people in Gainesville. So, moving folks out means that you give additional capacity in the other locations.
Are you moving folks out to open this one?
Yeah. Anybody who lives out in Putnam County, and would rather be served in Putnam County, I don't want them driving to Gainesville every day, or every five days if they have take homes for counseling and therapy. Does it make a lot of sense? Because the minute they can't get a ride, or their car breaks down, they're in trouble.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls, I appreciate your passion, and hopefully you will attend those meetings.
Second Thursday, 9:00 AM, right here.
I have someone there. If I can make it, I'll be there. And we'll speak up a little more. It sounds like that's the direction.
Commissioner Adam Zach has a question also, and then we'll wrap this up.
I just want to say, I don't care if you're late to the game, or if you're just getting in the game, or whatever. We need more services here, and if you're going to provide more of those services, and you're the first person I heard that's committed to bricks and mortar building on your own, separate from that, to, for specifically what you're doing. And some of the things you mentioned from, and I apologize, Commissioner Rawls, I haven't been to every one of your meetings, but some of it is definitely an augmentation to some of the things that aren't being offered right now, and is on that list that Nancy had. So I appreciate that, and thank you.
Okay, Don, thank you so much.
We're here to help. Give us a caller.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Okay.
I already know that. Got to start somewhere, though. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next item, we'll move down to Planning and Development Services, public hearings. Gabriel, start with item A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is Ordinance 21-033. This is the transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity of the property rights element. Earlier this year, the legislature passed an amendment to the Community Planning Act to require local governments to include a property rights element in their comprehensive plans. And the bill went into effect on July 1st, as provided in Florida statutes. And I quote, "In accordance with the legislative intent expressed in Statutes 163.3161 Subsection 10 and 187.101 Subsection 3, that governmental entities respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights. Each local government shall include in its comprehensive plan a property rights element to ensure that property, private property rights are considered in local decision-making. A local government may adopt its own property rights element or use the following statement of rights." And I'll read through the statement of rights provided in the statute. "The following rights shall be considered in local decision-making. One, the right of a property owner to physically possess and control his or her interests in the property, including easements, leases, or mineral rights. Two, the right of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or for the use of any other person, subject to state law and local ordinances. Three, the right of the property owner to privacy and to exclude others from the property to protect the owner's possessions and property. And four, the right of a property owner to dispose of his or her property through sale or gift." Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners transmit the proposed amendment and ordinance to the Department of Economic Opportunity for expedited review. And this concludes this portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
I do, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Gabriel, thank you. According to, well, listening to Mr. Woodward this morning, earlier about painting with a broad brush, government has unintended consequences when we start doing that. Somebody say something?
That was Killer Brew.
Okay, I'm sorry. My point is this, for the protection of people's property rights with an incompatible land use, isn't that taken care of through the zoning and through the planning commission?
That is one of the things, Chairman, sorry, Commissioner Harvey, that we look at.
Okay. So the two, and when we talk about zoning board of adjustments and the planning commission, those are citizens committees. So, and they accept testimony, and they consider those neighboring incompatibilities and things in that nature. So, why would we want to muddy the water up a little bit when we have those citizens committees that are making those decisions at that point?
Well, I can attest to what you said, that yes, we do, we do consider incompatible land uses when issuing a staff recommendation. And I can say also that our planning commission and ZBOA should also look at those items, or that item, when considering changing a future land use or zoning on a piece of property.
Thank you, Gabriel. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay. Commissioner Adams-Zack?
So, to what point can they, the ZBOA, let's say for instance, or your department, utilize, what discretion do you have on determining what is considered a land use that is detrimental to the neighbors, or vice versa?
So normally, we look at things like the nuisance that it would introduce into the area. Smell, noise, aesthetic degradation, among others. But we would also look at, in the code, we have our zoning districts state exactly what land uses they can go, and then the land uses then... Good planning practice would call for a transition in land uses. So, we wouldn't want to put a very highly intense future land use category right next to an agricultural area. So, there is some discretion, to answer your question. There isn't a concrete set of rules that would be followed, other than those that good planning practice would call for, and what the code currently establishes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll open up this portion.
So I got a question from Mr. Commando. Were you able to find anything that you were looking for?
So, yes, just so the rest of the commission's aware. I mean, one of the things that we are looking at is where these protections already exist. And in general, that adoption process for land use changes exists as part of the comprehensive plan amendment process. You can see it in our immunity code procedures under Division 16. But it's also protected by statute under Section 163.3184. It even goes so far as to define what an affected person is of an abutting property. And yes, those are considerations that come into the character of the neighborhood and things like that.
Okay. Commissioners, any more questions? Okay, I'll open up this portion for public comment. Anybody wishing to make comments for or gets this particular item? Okay. Mr. Woodward, you done?
I hope I'm not wrong in interpreting that as an invitation.
Okay.
I want to just point out that the purpose of the property rights amendment, excuse me, the property rights element in the comprehensive plan is just to serve as a reminder. It does not create any new rights. It does not create any causes of action, neighbor against neighbor, citizen against county. It doesn't do any of those things. Objective J11 says that the county shall consider the following policies in local decision-making. So this is just a reminder to whoever's making the decision, whether it's this board, whether it's the zoning board of adjustment, whether it's the planning commission, anybody who's in the decision-making process for the county should be reminded, first of all, that property owners have real rights. And that's what the first four elements do, or the first four policies do. And my suggestion was simply to add a fifth one as a reminder that there are occasions when the rights of property owners who are not the applicant also come into play and need to be balanced with the rights, the property rights of the applicant. And while I agree with Mr. Rawls that some more artful language might have been employed in doing so, I hope that you will be comfortable with the notion that, I'm not trying to pull any sneaky lawyer trick. I'm just trying to put a balance into this to remind everybody in the chain of decision-making that sometimes you have to balance one person's property rights against another. And we need to see both sides of that sometimes. So if you're not comfortable with my language, or you don't want to propose any of your own, I'll go home feeling like I've done a good day's work here this morning, just getting this conversation going so that at least all of us in this room can be reminded that sometimes the other folks have property rights too. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Woodward, so are you admitting that attorneys have sneaky lawyer tricks that they do? Is that a public acknowledgement of that? Just, a little humor goes a long way, according to Mr. Pickens.
I think my remarks should not be construed as an admission, but rather as a denial.
But, Mr. Woodward, I feel very comfortable in the fact that what you said is right, that this isn't a mandate, it's just a reminder. And we have citizens boards that look at that. So I don't see us adding something more to it, based on those two citizens boards that we have. Making the, making one goes, if there's an appeal, goes to the circuit court, and the other, the appeal comes to this board. So there's plenty of opportunity for us to consider, once it goes through staff and those citizens board, of the, what you refer to as the incompatible neighboring land use. So I think that that's well taken care of, so I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams-Zack?
I really do appreciate the idea of protecting the neighborhood's rights and the neighbors directly, and even beyond the direct neighbors. But I think this is taken care of through process. We're yet to see, in some cases, if process is going to work. But I think the process is there to accommodate this. So I don't really see where adding it is necessarily the right idea in my mind. Maybe changing the process, if we find a point where the process is broken, would be the better place to do it. And I think it may have more effect. But so far, in the year that I've been here, I haven't seen an example where that process is broken yet. Does that make sense?
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Commissioner Harvey took the words right out of my mouth. I wrote down ZBOA and planning boards. You know, that's our stopgap. And this is, I think, where we as citizens need to not only take care of our own personal property, also be respectful of our neighbors' properties. And I think that's just part of being an American citizen. I don't think we can put enough words on paper that would stop somebody from doing something to offend somebody else. It's just, you're not going to have it. If I could wave a magic wand, I wouldn't hear these loud trucks driving up and down the street and dirt bikes and four-wheelers every weekend, racing up and down paved streets. But it's just the country that we live in, it's part of being an American citizen. But I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate the fact that you did pick up on that. It's definitely worth the conversation. But I'm in favor of just leaving it alone the way it is.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
And I have enjoyed the dialogue.
Okay. All right. Any other individuals wishing to speak on before or gets this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the property rights element on TA 21-02, and that we go ahead and refer this to, we recommend the Board of County Commissioners transmit the proposed amendment and ordinance to the Department of Economic Opportunity for expedited review.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Adams-Zack. Okay, any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate, if seeing aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign. Okay, item passes. Gabriel, item B?
Yes, sir. If you'll give me just a moment, the presentation is, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? Why Gabriel's getting ready? Sorry, I got tongue-tied. It's just been a year since I've been able to make motions. I just got a little bit excited there, okay?
This item is case number R21-018. It's this ordinance number 21-031, to adopt a zoning map amendment from agriculture to residential one. This request is to change the zoning map designation from agriculture to R1 on two parcels. The property is located on the south side of East Penile Road, along Penile Church Road. The property is designated urban reserve on the future land use map. It is 14.40 acres in size, contains approximately 547 feet of frontage on East Penile Road and 1,997 feet of frontage on Penile Church Road. It does not contain areas of special flood hazard, meaning the 100 flood, or 100-year floodplain areas. There are areas of jurisdictional wetlands identified on the property. And the property is currently contained a single-family dwelling and two detached sheds. So above is an aerial of the property. Future land use map. To the south, we have agricultural land use. Current zoning, surrounded by agricultural zoning. The wetlands map delineated mainly along the banks of a stream bisecting the property. So, this is a conceptual site plan that was submitted by the applicant. We can return to that in just a moment, with some conceptual architectural renderings for the homes that are proposed if this rezoning is approved and after the property is preliminarily platted and then final platted. So the urban reserve category on the future land use map consists of areas in close proximity to municipalities or adjacent to designated urban service areas. Many of these areas have not been provided with a full range of urban-type infrastructure, as in the case of this property. The only utility that I know is out there is Polka Gas, or is given, serviced by Polka Gas. So residential development is allowed at a density of one dwelling unit per acre. An increase in density is allowed up to a maximum of four dwelling units per acre as determined by the point-score criteria, which is going away, this criteria with the adoption. But the density would still be compatible with the proposed density under the proposed comprehensive plan language. And residential density is not allowed to exceed two dwelling units per acre without a community-scale potable water and/or sewer system. The zoning is agriculture, as previously stated. Agriculture allows for general agriculture uses and single-family residential uses. And agriculture is also considered a holding category within the urban reserve land use. So you can't rezone back to agriculture within urban reserve. Okay, so the proposed zoning, or the requested zoning district, is R1. And this district is intended to provide a residential zoning district for use primarily in the rural residential. is intended to provide a residential zoning district for use primarily in the rural residential, rural center, urban service, and urban reserve land use classifications. The future land use designation is urban reserve. As previously stated, the road, so Penile Church Road and East Penile Road are both considered Class 1 paved local roads. Development on the site is proposed to be served by well and septic. And the surrounding land uses consist chiefly of single-family residential uses on property-assigned agricultural zoning. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from agriculture to R1 as conditioned is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, and will not adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent and surrounding properties. So this is a bit of a unique case, because normally we don't propose conditions on rezonings. But the applicant-submitted application exhibits, including a conceptual plan, architectural renderings, and a narrative statement in support of this request, in which the applicant voluntarily proffered restrictions on the lot size, total number of lots, and type of housing to be constructed on the subject property in order to maintain compatibility of the proposed development with the character of the established surrounding residential areas. And the staff recommendation was partly based on the restrictions to be placed on the proposed residential development of the property. So normally, we would simply recommend on the highest or most intense use allowed in the zoning district. In this case, because the applicant voluntarily proffered the conditions, and because there is a public purpose to those conditions, so preserving the character of the area, we are recommending the adoption of the zoning amendment subject to three conditions. I'll quickly read through the conditions. Number one, the maximum number of residential lots allowed for the development shall not exceed 15 lots. Compliance with this requirement shall be definitively demonstrated prior to preliminary plat approval. Two, the minimum residential lot size shall not be less than 3/4 acres. Compliance with this requirement will be, shall be definitively demonstrated prior to preliminary plat approval. And this is to maintain the compatibility of the lot sizes with the surrounding area. And three, all single-family residences constructed within the development shall consist solely of site-built residences. Modular construction is prohibited. Compliance with this requirement shall be definitively demonstrated at the time of building permit submitted. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, questions of staff? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gabriel, based on the applicant's voluntary, basically, I don't want to say restrictions, but ideas of what's going to take place on the property, what if it doesn't take place? What happens then?
So if it doesn't take place, then the conditions would remain on the property. Any other person coming in would have to develop according to those conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
Or they could apply for a PUD.
Correct.
So the, the conditions don't stay on the property necessarily if someone else buys it, they can...
If they rezone later on, which would be the PUD, then yes, they...
They can do what they want, okay.
Yeah, that was my question, could they change it later on? Would they could through the rezoning and do a PUD or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And I assume without modular homes are prohibited, mobile homes are prohibited also, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward and make any statements? Please state your name and address for the record.
Richard Parkinson with BG RP Engineering Group, PO Box 648, Crystal River, Florida, 34428. I'm just here representing the, our client, the owner. I don't really have anything to add to what Gabriel said. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the representative for the applicant? Okay, all right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Is, are there any individuals wishing to speak for or against this particular rezoning? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the staff recommendations with the items 1, 2, and 3 as listed on those findings and recommendations on case number R 21-018.
Okay, we've got a proper motion. Do we have a proper second?
I'll second. I'll also state that I've had expertise communication with Billy Gows, the engineer on this job, but it does not affect my vote.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion?
I just want to state I have had expertise communication with one of the representatives for the builder, as well as several of the people in the neighborhood, because I happen to know them. And it will not affect my vote.
Okay, and I've had none, other than, well, I did, I spoke to one of my former teachers, Mr. Chelsea Merritt, out in the audience. Other than that, I've had none, and it won't affect my vote. Commissioner Harvey?
That's a $5 fine.
I don't know how to use it. That's the problem.
That's a $10 fine.
I have no...
Step on it.
Question?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought I did this, but I'll open it up for public comment, but I've already done that.
You did.
Okay, I thought I did that, okay. Okay, nobody wants to speak. Okay, we've got a proper motion, a proper second, all in favor indicate, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Good luck with your project. Okay, we'll move down to item C, case number 21-019 zoning map amendment.
Mr. Chairman, this is a ordinance number 21-032 zoning map amendment from planned unit development to agriculture. The request is a zoning map amendment for 10 parcels containing 435.37 acres from planned unit development to agriculture. This planned unit development is expired and has been expired for a number of years. The property is located on the north side of Georgetown Shortcut Road. The property is designated agricultural 2 and rural residential on the future land use map. It is currently undeveloped and has approximately 3,775 linear feet of frontage on Georgetown-Shortcut Road. The 435.37 acres included in this request form part of a portion, or, excuse me, form a portion of the expired Live Oak Golf Club Estates planned unit development adopted in 1999. Phase 1 of the PUD was built and is not a portion of this rezoning request, and contains a utility area, golf course, and the Live Oak Golf and Country Club Estates single-family platted subdivision. And all of which will remain under the control of the Live Oak Golf Club Estates PUD. This is an aerial. Future land use. Current zoning district. The wetlands map contains a significant amount of wetlands, significant amount of 100-year floodplain areas as well. So the agriculture 2 category on the future land use map consists of areas used for silviculture and rangeland and other agricultural uses, vacant lands, and residential parcels of land, some of which exceed the density allowed in this future land use category. It is intended that a large share of this land will remain in active agricultural production in the future. Agricultural uses are permitted, and residential development is permitted at a density of one dwelling unit per 20 acres. The rural residential category on the future land use map consists of areas located adjacent to municipalities, and areas designated urban service, urban reserve, and rural center. The property is presently zoned PUD. The proposed is agricultural use categories allowed in the agricultural district are residential and agricultural uses. Our analysis, the rezoning of this property is considered less intensive than the PUD, which is expired, which would result in fewer average daily roadway trips than what was previously adopted under the PUD, or anticipated, I should say. Georgetown-Shortcut Road has an adopted level of service of D and operates acceptably based on 2019 data. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to agriculture is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with locational requirements for agricultural zoning, and compatible with surrounding uses. I will mention that there are small portions of this land that are zoned rural residential, which ideally would not be rezoned back to agriculture, but our comprehensive plan corrections to the future land use map are addressing that, because the line was drawn arbitrarily, and we could not find any identifiable, like, say, section line or physical line that was based on. So we are correcting that and changing it back to agriculture in the areas that are being rezoned to agriculture in this request. And staff recommends approval of the request. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gabriel, on the PUD, am I assuming correctly that going from PUD to agriculture is going to be less, less intensive?
Yes, sir.
That's all the question I need. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rawls?
With the comp plan that was just presented, the Ag 2 goes away, they go to 1 and 10 automatically, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Any representative, would you like to make any comments? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Mark Jones, 110 Nautilus Lane, Ponte Vedra Beach, Florida. I'm the landowner. So we, we bought this land several years back, in good faith, to develop this land under the PUD that was in place. We, under prior commission, we were advised that we could do certain things with the land. Primarily, we wanted to sell 10-acre estate lots, so we started selling those lots on Georgetown-Shortcut Road. And then some of our buyers advised us that they were not permitted to build on the lots. And so, in good faith, we're trying to make things right for them. We've been working with Gabriel quite a bit over the last, I'd say, nine months, with many contracts falling through in this process, in order to rectify the situation. So it's come to our attention about May of this year that because the PUD is expired, we cannot do anything with it. So we're going through the process of rezoning with the intention to develop several 10-acre lots and maintain the beautiful silviculture that we have going on right now for the remainder of the land. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Rawls, a question?
Yeah, I'm confused. You're going from PUD to Ag, but are you going to apply for another PUD to subdivide that into 10-acre lots? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, we, we have to go through a Type 2 subdivision.
Subdivision, so you're going to the state. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up the public.
I do have one question.
Commissioner Rawls?
Just for clarification, Gabriel. Why would a Type 2 subdivision be, is that, that's not the path of least resistance, is it?
Yes, sir, it would be, the, the only other option would be to plat it.
Right.
In a Type 1, so it's the easiest option for them after they remove the PUD.
Okay.
Say, on a, on a Type 2, so it would be 10-acre lots, and they would be able to access it from the paved road Georgetown-Shortcut?
Yes, sir, they would all have...
Would they not have to put paved roads and things like this in that subdivision, or would they?
They would not, no, sir. This subdivision's limited to a maximum of six lots, and they are allowed to slightly go below 10 acres if they maintain an overall density of 1 to 10. So their entire subdivision would have to be maintained, so one may have a 15-acre lot and the other eight. Overall, it maintains the 10-acre density, just as an example, but no more than six lots, and they all have to front on Georgetown-Shortcut. And if there are any drainage improvements necessary along Georgetown-Shortcut, so say a ditch has to be dug to accommodate additional impervious surface, that would be required during the review of the Type 2 subdivision. But aside from that, we don't foresee any other improvements.
From the developer?
Correct.
Okay.
At the expense of the developer.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Rawls?
So the, right now, it's 1 and 20. When, when does it revert to 1 and 10?
So at 5:05, we'll have the hearing to adopt, and if the commission adopts it, then we would, there's a 31-day waiting period. And then, once that period elapses, then it becomes effective.
First question.
All the questions? Okay, we'll open up the public comment portion. Any individuals wishing to speak for or against this rezoning? Okay, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the official zoning map from planned unit development to agricultural on case number R 21-019.
Okay, we've got a proper motion, we've got a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Passes, good luck with your project.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody need a break?
Yeah, let's take a three.
Let's take a 3 minute 12 second break. Okay, we'll move down to number eight, Park and Recreation Public Hearing. Item A, Parks and Recs Ordinance Change, number 21-030. Julianne?
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioner, Chairman. We'll get there. As we discussed at the November 9th workshop, this ordinance change removes the designated seats of the department director as well as the county administrator to allow that committee to have better communication and collaboration. And in their spots, it adds two at-large members so that the total committee makeup number doesn't change, it simply removes those two administrative people.
Okay, all right, and as the, if I can make a couple of comments, as the chairman of the Parks and Recs Advisory Committee, this will make this a lot easier for members of the board to contact Administrator Suggs and Kevin Stevens of Parks and Recs Department to discuss things before they come before us, so, and we were not able to do that under the sunshine long before, so I appreciate this being moved forward. Any commissioner comments at all?
None.
Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. Is any individual wishing to speak for or against the change in this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the ordinance 2021-030 as presented.
Okay, we've got a proper motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and I keep saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Ordinance passes. Okay, Mr. Tom, we'll move down to Code Enforcement, number nine. Good morning.
First property is 142 East Drive, floor home. Property owner's name is Jennifer Kite. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was $85,862 and the total cost of enforcement action was $3,083. The property owner has recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, and the owners requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Okay, all right, is the property owner here? Okay, no. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept on code case 2010-00302, $1,683, removing the $1,400 administrative monthly, and that would be 1,683 if paid in 90 days.
Okay, got a proper motion to reduce it down to 1,683. Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? I don't need any public comment on this one at all, do I? Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay. Item B, 216-00543.
The address is 351 Hickory Nut Trail. The property owner's name is Thomas Hayes Living Trust. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was $24,846.35. Total cost of enforcement action was $2,235. The new owner had a fine reduction approved on June 7, 2021, for a reduced fine amount of $1,695. Due to personal reasons, he did not make the deadline to make the payment by 9/8/2021 and is requesting more time to pay the reduced amount.
Okay, all right, Commissioner questions of staff? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Mr. Moore, did the applicant say how much time he needed to facilitate this request?
I mentioned 90 days and he said that would probably be sufficient. He has another property that I'm presenting at the next BOCC for another fine reduction that he bought at a tax deed sale, but he said he should be able to cover this one.
Well, my only concern, it is the holidays and money's tight right now and I realize that, and I don't want to put him in a position where he can't make it, but I can handle that in the motions, so.
Okay, has he made any payment at all?
No, sir, not yet.
I didn't think so, okay. Commissioner Adams, aye?
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Okay, is the property owner here? No. Okay. Have we ever done this before? I guess he's, I wish he'd have made a payment, at least he was making an attempt. I don't have a problem with another 90 days. But what happens after the next 90 days? I guess we would, I've never been in this position before as a commissioner, to what happens after that? Do the fines start going back?
They just go back to the original amount. I think this is the second one I've had to present to y'all since I've been doing this.
Okay, Commissioners, what's the pleasure of the board?
I just make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I make a motion that we give an additional 90 days with the caveat that if it's not paid within 90 days, that the fine goes back to the original amount.
Okay, got a proper motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a proper second, got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, a proper second by Commissioner Harvey?
I just, I just say one thing, I think the intent is to get him to clean the property up, he's done that.
Yes.
So this is, you know, we don't need to be heavy-handed, obviously, but just encourage him to take care of the rest of it.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and I keep saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Okay, we'll move down to item 10, Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Welcome back to the chairmanship, sir. I'm sure, not sure whether to say congratulations or condolences, so we'll just see how this year goes and, you know, continue knocking on wood and hopefully you won't have a hurricane or COVID or anything to deal with. So I do have one thing that I would like to bring up to the board today. I was originally going to prepare an agenda item and go ahead and have it formalized on the agenda, but I did speak with the county administrator. He requested that I get consensus of the board first before we develop the budget resolution and put it on the agenda. And it's very, it's the same request that the board has already heard from the tax collector and the sheriff's office. The clerk's office had approximately $34,500 worth of items that we had ordered before. We ordered them in June. They still did not come in by the end of September. The vast majority of that cost was, it was 21 computers. We try to replace about a third of the computers in the clerk's office every year so that we, they're all under warranty and they're all relatively up to date. That was 28,000 of the 35,000, so we're going to have those costs in this fiscal year, so I would request, if it's the consensus of the board, to bring a budget resolution back to the board to have the clerk's office reallocated that $34,522. The clerk's office, there's kind of two parts to it, so if the board, if there's consensus of the board and the board is fine with that, I'll work with county administrative staff to develop that budget resolution and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Question, though, for council, we can't do this today without a resolution that's been brought to us. Okay, well, this commissioner's--
There's no rush for it.
I'm in support of it, so that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
There, and then the second part to this is, the clerk's office did return approximately 149,000 for last fiscal year, so we're only requesting 34,522 of that. I would like to request that the remainder of that money be added to the approximately 110,000 that's already held in reserve. And I would like to have that money earmarked for facility improvements, capital improvements. There's been a lot of things down, not even necessarily with the courthouse itself. The one building that I've heard the most about and I've had at least five people contact me about the building because they're interested in purchasing it is the Clark Building. And I do know that we have some plans for the Clark Building, they were put out to bid. This was obviously before COVID and the bids came in well over the amount of funding that the county has in the courthouse improvement fund. But the entities that are located down in all of those facilities, public defender's office, state attorney's office, Guardian, our office, court administration, we're all very limited on space. For example, right now, I don't have a break room for staff. I don't have a full kitchen area for staff. I don't have a room for jurors when they, I have the old Board of County Commissioner meeting room, but we have to schedule that when it's available. So we're very, very limited on space, so I would like to take the remainder after the $34,522 and just add it to the 110,000 that we already had in reserve and earmark it for security upgrades, building access, office space improvements. We've got some safety upgrades out at our records center that we need to do as well to make sure that staff that operate out there are safe, so I would just like to make that request to the board as well, and if the consensus of the board is that they're okay with that, we can write that into the budget resolution just to have that money set aside for that reserve. I'm not asking for it to be allocated to the clerk's office this year. Anything, any sort of projects that we come up with, I'll of course have to come back to the board and I'll make a request of those funds, but this would just be a preliminary step just to earmark it for those types of projects so that I know that I have some funding so that I can get some of the highest priority things underway, at least planning-wise, and then come back to the board with a formal budget resolution request as I have more information on those.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Clerk, what you're really looking for is for us to kind of bless the proposal, whether you earmark it or whether we just take it out of general fund reserves for 110,000 worth of expenses that you see need to be done at your facilities, the facilities you use, that the county owns. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, and it would be more of a, instead of the remainder of those funds basically going into the general fund reserves and being included with all of the reserves, just adding it to the 110,000 that we already have that's set aside from a previous backcasting settlement.
This is in addition to your own town.
Right, and then I'll have about 230,000, 240,000. Obviously, top priority right now is trying to get something, some movement on the Clark Building because that will create a lot of space for all of us. That will, you know, rectify the issues with the space for the state attorney's office and that'll give us more space in the courthouse to try to do a break room, a room for jurors, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Ms. Young, how many, how much money was budgeted to come back? How much did we put in our general fund that was budgeted to come back from the clerk that were used? None? Okay, so we wouldn't, this wouldn't be a deficit to us? Okay, thank you. You got my support on that, so I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
Did you, were you able to give your staff pay raises this year?
No, sir.
So why would you not use that money for that?
I could, but the problem with that is that'll be a recurring cost and I'm not sure what I'll have in returns coming back at the end of this year. I didn't build any, when I was building the budget, I built it based on the same number of staff that the clerk's office had when I took over, 62 staff, so I don't have any extra room. Any sort of savings that the clerk's office will generate to come back to the board at the end of the year is going to be through attrition if I have staff, staff turnover.
Well, the reason I asked the question is, you know--
I would love to be, I would love to be able to do that, but being fiscally responsible, I don't want to incur that cost and then have to come back to the board next year, and then that's an additional cost that's built into my base that with the process that the board took this year, doing the percentage allocation on ad valorem increases, I can't rely on that coming back to me again next year, so I don't want to get myself in a bad position.
I know, but you're, I'm just, I'm sure I'm preaching the choir here, but, you know, with inflation at the rate it is right now and the cost of everything going up, that's just a double or triple whammy for the folks that are having endured that. They get to go another year of losing money versus having something given to just partially stay, not even completely cover the cost of living, but I understand your position, I respect that. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. I stand in support.
Okay, so we just consensus it forward?
Yeah, it seems to me that the consensus of the board is that they're okay with it. I'll work with county administrative staff, we'll develop the budget resolution and we'll bring it back at the next--
I'd be in support of a budget resolution that allowed you to build a properly funded pay raise for your staff, just so you'll know.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll move down to appointments. Commissioner Adams, aye?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I have none, but Sarah, could you please reach out to Ms. Meese and ask her if she would be willing to serve another term or, thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
And I have none also. So we'll move down to item 12, Terry Suggs, county administrator.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and welcome back, sir, having the chairmanship role. So just a couple of things this morning. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to welcome Ms. Sarah Herbin back to the family. It's been a, it's been a long time and I'm glad to see Ms. Sarah's back and doing the things that she is happy at doing, which is serving this board of county commissioners and working with staff. So Sarah, we are all excited to have you back.
I'm grateful.
Absolutely, and thank you. Second thing, Mr. Chairman, is the Commissioners asked for an update on the Bargeport project. So yesterday, we've met with, as you've all met, Mr. Rick Farren, who has assisted us through the process at this point. We've met with him and another potential individual that's going to help us get through the next phase, which is the feasibility study and the drafting of the plan. So we're looking at possibly coming in on the December 14th meeting. We have a port authority meeting that morning, 9:00 AM, to let them come in and do a presentation to the five elected officials as to where we're at, what we're looking at, and where we plan to be in the next 18 months. So we'll have that scheduled for you for that Tuesday morning. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. County Attorney, Mr. Commando?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let you know that I am asking that lease between the county and Cimarron, actually, there are two leases for two different properties, be considered at the workshop today. This has been a long way in the making, but I want to let you know, I'm going to drop off copies of the two of them for you to review in between now and then, and if you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And that will be for action this afternoon, correct? Just let the public know.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner comments to my far right, Commissioner Adams, aye?
I guess I've been thinking, we did these two public meetings, we've had several times, now we're, the same people have kind of come to us and talked about some of the ARPA stuff and, you know, one of the, one of the projects that obviously is a need for the community and whether or not we decide to go forward with it or not, but is, I'd like to be more prepared when we start deciding on these things, and I guess the ask is kind of like when we went to buy the property or when we went to consider buying the property across the street from the port, is there a way we could have a realtor, an independent assessment-- the street from the port, is there a way we could have a realtor, an independent assessment of that property that I think it's, Epic is looking for us to participate in purchasing? I just don't, you know, they give us a number. I'd like to have it be a real number. And if that doesn't cost us anything, I'd like to see us if we could ask staff to do that just to see if that eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, nine-hundred thousand they propose is actually what the real value of the property is so that we're ready. What's that? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, when we did the analysis for the GP property, there was an appraisal, or for the port property now, was an appraisal done. So, there is a cost associated with that. But if the direction of the board is for us to seek some guidance from some local folks to see if that number's acceptable, that's fine. But if we want to get the true value of that number, we're going to need to do an appraisal on that property. And that will be a cost.
But what does an appraisal cost about?
Well, I don't know what the last-
What the one in GP costs?
It's, I can, you know, it's somewhere probably around a thousand dollars or so for a minor commercial property. But, but there is a cost associated with it.
I'd like to see it because when the conversation comes before us, I'd like to have that information when we make the decision. So, what do we have to do to ask, to do that?
Has anybody contacted anybody from Epicure to see if maybe they have? Because, you know, they've been there before ARPA, you know, money came down. So, I was wondering if they were considering buying the property. Maybe they had done a proposal.
I can reach out to the folks that are involved with the Epicure facility. And honestly, the reason why we haven't done anything with it is we haven't been given any direction for going to utilize any ARPA dollars or any county dollars for that particular project. So, before we go out and do any of that, I would definitely need direction from the board on doing that.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to establish. I'd at least like to see if we can contact some realtors and see if they can give us the swag on it, if that's fair. Just because we're talking about, it's not a listed property. It's not available, I think, on the MLS currently. So, it's just kind of an agreement between two people, I guess. So, I'd just like to make sure that we're not agreeing to agree to something possibly in the next month or two that doesn't make sense fiscally from the value perspective. I think it probably does, looking at the property, but I have no idea. I'm not a commercial property.
I'd be more than happy to, Mr. Chairman, if I can reach out to some, some local providers in that arena and see if they can give us some assistance on that. I'd be more than happy to do that. And if we can get it done to where everybody's comfortable, I'll bring that back to the board and let them share that information. And if we want to move forward, we can at that time, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Harvey had a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls, do you have a comment on it?
I think it wouldn't take a whole lot for somebody to go through, take a look at recent sales, get a square foot, cost per square foot on commercial property. I don't know if that property is on commercial or industrial. I would imagine it's probably more industrial. But either way, take a look at some comparables and we can figure that ourselves without having to spend any money. It's not, as for BPO, and somebody will probably give that in a few seconds.
Yeah, and I guess to add to that, based on what you're saying, is part of my concern is, may it be more economical whether we did this project or a different project to build a newer building somewhere on five acres or something. That building, I've been in it. They're putting a lot into it because it needs a lot put into it. So, I'm a little bit fearful of purchasing a white elephant and, you know, paying top dollar for it. I agree with the cause a hundred percent. I just don't, I've had concerns about the location. She eased some of those concerns the last time she was in this room, basically when she said basically that their goal is to get it to be more of a, people come there throughout the week instead of having that line going down. At some point, that long line going down that road isn't going to be, something bad is going to happen. And I don't want that to happen. So, I just think we just need to do some due diligence here, and this is the first step that I thought of. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Rawls?
I wanted to, we kind of left the meeting with the city hanging until we got the new chairman. Wanted to see if we're going to be meeting with the city of Palaca. They've expressed an interest in meeting with us and-
Okay, not the meeting next Monday on ARPA. We're talking here, you're talking about a meeting with Palaca?
Yeah, yeah. Start having, I think it's important for us to start having regular meetings with the city of Palaca to discuss-
I'll reach out to Mayor Hill and get that set up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rawls, do you mind if I make a comment?
Sure.
After the last meeting when the mayor stood here and, and asked me about it, I did reach out to all the council people, including the mayor, and heard nothing back yet. So, I will pass that on to you at this point, okay?
Oh, well, I'll speak to, I'll be talking to the mayor this afternoon, so I'll make sure that we get a reply from them. Because they've, they've told me several times they've, they would like to meet with us. I think it's best for the citizens for us to be working on as many projects as we can together because they're, they're our county seat, our offices inside their city limits. All right, so I'm going to pass these out. And I got, Rich, if you'll pass this down. So, these are, I honestly don't really need one. I got all I need, but I'll give him another one. Take one of each?
Take one of each.
Yeah. So, these are some elevations, the floor plans. So, we're asking about the animal services. And by the way, Matt, what you were talking about, that would be a perfect project for the, if the county had a construction manager, they could pull in, small project like that. You know, we could take a look at all the numbers, select the most competitive pricing and get that work done. Save a lot of money that way. And then I only had to print one of these. I asked her to, I only wanted certain pages, but I'll pass this around. Y'all can, this is, one of the concerns that was expressed early on was how they're going to handle getting rid of the waste from the animals. So, this is a trench drain that our company is currently utilizing on another project. And we're spending a half a million dollars on this stuff. We're putting a lot of it in. So, I'll be very familiar with it in the next month and a half or so. But they come in eight-foot sections. The bottom portion is some cementitious with a polyester resin. So, it's like a fiberglass that's reinforced with concrete. The brown piece is plywood. That stays on through construction. So, once the, once, once the construction's over with, then you can go back and put on the grates. The grates that we're using are fiberglass, but they have cast iron and they have stainless steel, if you wanted to bite that big apple. But I don't know if it's necessary. But what's cool is this is in, is in the end of the drain. So, what we're proposing to do, when you look at the floor plan for the kennel, the drains would pitch from end to end toward the middle. And then on each end would be one of those spray nozzles. So, you hit a valve and it flushes. And then this would be in the middle, which is a strainer to catch dog hair and any kind of, anything that's not broken up, basically. That's, I guess, a big concern too. So, you, you know, the poop will be picked up, not just washed down the drain, but everything else that lays on the ground, whether it's dog fur or urine or whatever, would get flushed. And then that would go out to a grinder pump, which would digest it and send it on down to the, these are just more technical drawings if y'all want to look. It's nothing exciting. So, that, the architect is currently working on life safety review and the ADA compliance requirements. And as soon as he's finished with his portion, we'll hand it off to the engineer. What you got?
Okay. Commissioner Adamsack had a couple of questions.
I just kind of want to say something quick. As far as like the conceptual front and any of the extra things, I think whatever's cheapest is what I want because the location of the building, it's not like we're putting it out at the end in front of Triangle Park or something where everyone's going to drive past it. I think we need to think about, if we can save money on that front and make it be just a door even, I'm just saying, we if we could build ten more kennels by just having that be a simple and cheap, what we need is kennels. What we don't, we don't need pretty. And I know that some people in the community may object to that, but the bottom line is we're here to try to house as many dogs as possible and take care of a problem that is community-wide. We already know today that that thing's going to be filled probably within two weeks. As fast as they can go get the dogs that people are calling about, we're going to fill that thing. So, you know, anything that we can cut out as far as design and prettiness, I think needs to go back to the dog part of the facility.
I agree. We can take out the stone or whatever we have. And I think that the covered entrance is, is functional and that if it's raining, it keeps water, you know, you need to have some sort of a porticochet or whatever you want to call it to step into or locha. But we could also, we could change the color of metal. The price of metal doesn't matter if you're buying it all the same color or not. So, we could, you know, do a two-tone. You've seen my, the bill I built for myself, do something like that. It wouldn't cost any additional money. But that's, we, I just, we had those, they were already conceptualized. So, I figured y'all could take a look at it and see.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Rawls, thank you for all this work, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where do we go from here, honestly? Because I kind of brought that up at the last-
We need to start looking at getting a construction manager that we can work with. And once the, once the architect finishes his drawings, there, there may still be some details we want to add in. That's typically where the construction manager steps in. If we give them a sixty percent set of plans, seventy percent, they'll, that last thirty percent's really easy to get to because all the drawing work is done. You're just tweaking a few things. But where you really start to save money or spend money is where you, you know, the devil's in the details, the money's in the detail. So, if we sit here and agree that we're going to use a standard hollow metal jammed door like that door right there, but metal door instead of wood stained, you know, that's painted.
Sure.
That's, you know, those kind of answers need to happen. What are we doing for flooring, for baseboards and acoustical ceilings? You know, we got Tegular tile in here, but do we really need that? We can have just regular, you know?
So, when can we go for a construction manager to-
I think, I personally would like us to see us look at hiring a construction manager on staff, like we just discussed with that, that project that the clerk, of course, looking at. If you had a construction manager on staff, they could, they could be looking at that project for us right now.
Yeah, I get that. But that doesn't seem to be the way we're moving. So, are we going to go out for an RFP or an RFQ for a construction manager on this? And how would that-
I would, I would, I would do an RFQ and I would, I would bring him in on, as a staff member.
Yeah, I know that, but that doesn't seem to gain, so how do we-
I don't know what it does.
So, what do we, we can hire a standalone construction manager, can't we?
Yeah, absolutely.
Based on a RFQ?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Rawls?
Just wanted to say, wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. I'm eating turkey in a couple of days. And it's, you know, this, this year is just, I don't know, we're listening to the Meridian make their presentation, just you really have to realize that there are a lot of folks that are in need. Commissioner Adamsack was talking about Epicure. And you take a look at what the needs are in our community and look at how blessed we really are. So, this is the season for giving. And so, that's what we remember, our neighbors and all the folks that are in need. By the way, it's Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it feels good to say that. I do want to thank again every person I thanked earlier for a great year last year. And again, the staff that Mr. Suggs and has put together along with his leadership and are more than capable of handling this county in a professional manner. And I'm never disappointed whenever I go outside this community and hear about the good things that people feel about you, Mr. Suggs and Ms. Julianne and the staff that we have. And I can tell you, it's, it's a wonderful experience. And I just want to say thank you again for the commissioners, constitutionals that I've worked with. Just an opportunity that, once in a lifetime for me. Do want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And Friday night, don't forget the Palaca Christmas Parade, seven PM. We are scheduled to, I did fill out a form that we're going to be in it. So, whatever you need to do to prepare, and we'll see you down there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, immediate past Chair Harvey. I know that, I'm sure that feels good. I'd like to start by thanking Commissioner Rawls for all the work that he's put in on the Animal Control Center. We really-
If I could say though, honestly, half of what you see there was done by Danita Cole from the county.
Well, thank you, Danita Cole. Hope you're listening. And, and the advisory board too, also for their input. But this is a long thing coming, but I think we're maybe on the downhill side of this. So, hopefully, we'll have something started in construction soon. So, Sarah, welcome back. We sure missed you. Nice to see your smiling face over there. And anyway, first, I'd like to start by wishing my ninety-one-year-old mother, her birthday was yesterday. So, Happy Birthday, Mom. It's recorded. So, I did call her yesterday and she's doing well. And today is my youngest, Holly and our youngest son Bobby's thirtieth birthday. So, I want to wish him a birthday shout-out. And I want to thank Sarah from the newspaper, Michael Leonard, for all the support that y'all give us, coverage and everything. But on Friday, November nineteenth, in the events section, had a really good coverage of the events that are happening in South Putnam and West Putnam. A lot of things going on the weekend of the fourth from, starting on the second, the lighting of the Christmas tree in Eva Lyons Park in Crescent City. And then the third and the fourth, the Tenth Annual Christmas Jubilee down in Crescent City, Eva Lyons Park, sponsored by the Lions Club. They'll give away toys. There'll be a parade. I believe it's at twelve o'clock on Saturday. And the Yacht Club is having a car show and food vendors that same day. And they'll finish that day with fireworks at six-thirty. And also, the Presbyterian Church has their annual Christmas Azar and Silver Tea Yard Sale.
That's the fourth?
The fourth? The fourth, yeah, and that's Saturday.
And where is it?
In Crescent City. Eva Lyons Park is where the Christmas Azar is. And then, and then also on, across the street in Miller's Old Parking Lot, it's a car show down by Three Bananas. They'll have food vendors, and they'll shoot off the fireworks down at Three Bananas at six-thirty. And then also the Twenty-Fifth Annual Parade of Lights in Interlaken also. So, thank you for that coverage.
And the city of Palaca has their Christmas parade this Friday?
This Friday, yeah, right. I also want to just thank Commissioner Harvey for his leadership this year. Each year for a commissioner or for a chairperson, it's a challenge. And he had unique challenges. He didn't have a hurricane, but we still had the ramp of the COVID again and had to deal with that. But I just appreciate everything that, that you do do. And I'm truly honored to be chairperson. I'm sure we'll have our challenges, but I think we're moving in the right direction. And I look forward to the challenge. I want to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving. We do have a two o'clock transportation meeting and then a five oh five public hearing. So, if there's no, I want to open it up for public comment. Is anybody wishing to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll recess until five oh five. Thank you.